On a common council, February 13th. We'll start with our customary pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. We'll have roll call at this point. Ms. Clark?
Alderperson Diaz?
Here.
Alderperson Linder?
Here.
Alderperson McGilvery?
Here.
Alderperson Ricky?
Here.
Alderperson Stewart?
Here.
Alderperson Steiner?
Here.
Alderperson Touche?
Present.
Alderperson Doyle is absent and excused.
Thank you all for being here. Under item four, we'll take public comment. If there's anybody from the public that would like to speak this evening, please feel free to come forward. If you could put your name and address on the -- hopefully they've got something there for you to do that.
Thank you.
And welcome.
Thank you. Okay. All right, so I just have two quick comments. My name is Tim Ruder. I live on 467 Basswood Avenue in Verona. First comment was, I really appreciate the bike lanes that were put in on Basswood Avenue. I feel like that's been a big improvement with safety and just mindfulness of pedestrians as well, so I thought that was a great improvement. Also here to speak in support of the pool, and just wanted to, you know, reemphasize a lot of previous comments saying that I think it would be great to bring and build community within Verona. You know, we would definitely relish the opportunity to spend our time and our money in the summer within our community, rather than going to Madison or to some of the other pools in the area, which are wonderful, but it'd be great to even have it, you know, part of our own town as well, so. Okay, do you want to say a comment?
Good evening, City Council. My name is Sophia Ruder, and I live at 467 Basswood Avenue in Verona. I'm a first grade student at Sugar Creek Elementary School. My siblings and friends are very hopeful that Verona will find a way to build a community pool. I think a pool is important because children and adults can learn to swim, compete in swim meets, or triathlon, but most importantly, people can enjoy spending time with their friends and family. Thank you for all of the time that has been spent investigating this exciting opportunity. I hope that someday I can ride my bike with my family to a community pool in Verona instead of driving to Madison in Pittsburgh. Thank you for all for allowing me the opportunity to speak.
Well done.
Thank you.
That's great. I think that's the first time I've ever had a minor come forward and actually make public comment. That's amazing. Very well done. Is there anyone else from the public who would wish to speak at this point? Anyone else? Here's your chance, and thank you for coming. Appreciate your comments. We'll be moving on now to approval of minutes from the January 23rd, 2017 Common Council meeting. Thank you. We have a motion.
Second.
Second by Mr. Stewart. If you had a chance to review the minutes, if there's no further discussion, all those in favor of approving the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes. There is nothing under item six, which is the mayor's business. We'll move on to the administrator's report. Mr. Montpass. Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. McCorskey.
I have no report.
No reports. That's why I skipped you to begin with.
You're new, didn't you?
That's right. All right, Mr. Montpass. We'll move on to item eight, engineer's report.
Thank you. Just an update on some of the active projects. I won't read the entire list. The downtown streetscape, stage two, was bid out. You will see the recommendation for award on that later tonight in the meeting. The county trunk PD reconstruction, Edgerton, has completed the sewer installation, the sanitary, or the storm sewer installation on the westbound lanes, and is hoping to start work on the retaining walls on the, along the westbound, or southbound lanes, excuse me, the south side of the westbound lanes, possibly the end of this month, depending on design. The county trunk M utility design, 90 percent plans were submitted to MSA and the city for inclusion in that project for the 90 percent review. It is anticipated, the plan spec and estimate final version will be due in April for that project. The bike and ped projects, you saw last month, the discussion on the Box Culvert extension at Lower Badger Mill Creek. AECOM is working on a proposal right now for the city to design that, as well as the sidewalk extensions along M and Locust. The old PV bridges are still in design with, final design with Ayers and Associates. The signal designs that were discussed last month, the signals at Wayland and OPB, the signals at South Main Street and Paoli, and the signals at West Verona and West End Circle will be bid out in March of this year. The anticipated schedule is for the signals at OPB and Wayland to be done by the end of May. The signals at Paoli and South Main will be done while Main Street is under construction, and the signals at the West End will be done by the end of October. The wastewater master plan, the city has reviewed that, and we're making corrections on that project. And the Lincoln Street channel was submitted in draft form to the Army Corps, and we're in discussions with the city staff on that as well.
Very good. Thank you. You've heard the engineer's report. Does anyone have any questions to follow up on that? Seeing none, we will move on to our committee reports. Under the Finance Committee, Mr. Linder.
Thank you. Next is agenda item 9A1. I'll make a motion to approve the bills in the amount of $534,103.41.
You've heard the motion. Need a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Linder?
The three biggest bills for the month was $81,000 for South Central Library annual fee, $66,000 for, to Sun Prairie, for police record systems that we share a system with them, and $41,000 for a waste management fee.
Thank you, Mr. Linder. You've heard the explanation. Does anyone have any questions for the Finance Committee? Seeing none, there's a motion and a second for payment of the bills in the amount of $534,103.41. Is that correct, Mr. Linder?
That is correct.
Thank you. All those in favor of approving the minutes, or approving the payment of the bills, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? And that motion passes. Mr. Linder?
Yes, thank you. Next is agenda 9A2. I'll make a motion to approve memorandum of understanding between City of Pittsburgh and City of Verona, City of Monona, Town of Madison, and Oregon Area Fire and EMS for an assistance to firefighters grant.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Mr. Linder?
Thank you. The, this memorandum of understanding will allow the City of Verona Fire Department to be part of a City of Pittsburgh Regional Assistance to Firefighters Grant for self-contained breathing apparatus equipment. The city will receive operational benefits through standardization of protective equipment and the cost savings of a group purchase. The City of Verona will be responsible for the 10 percent local share of 30 SCBA units and 18 extra faceplates identified in the grant. So the, the cost for the Verona is going to be somewhere in the $21,000 range for 30 SCBA units, which is a pretty good deal, if we get this grant.
Thank you, Mr. Linder. Any further questions? The chief is here, if somebody wants some more meat on the bones. Nope? All right. You've heard the motion and the second. All those in favor of approving the motion as described signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes. Anything else from Finance Committee, Mr. Linder?
Nope, that is all. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to item 9B, the Personnel Committee. Ms. Ricky?
Under item, under item 9B1, I make a motion to approve resolution number R-17-010, approving a collective bargaining agreement with Wisconsin Professional Police Association for 2017 through 2019.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Ms. Ricky, and a second by Mr. Stewart. Anything you'd like to add?
The explanation is that this resolution will ratify the tentative agreement between the City of Verona and the Wisconsin Professional Police Association for a three-year contract that includes a 3 percent wage increase for each of the years of the contract. It will also change a half-day holiday into a full personal day, and add additional vacation hours to first-year and two-through-five-year officers. Additionally, it will include a new special assignment of canine handler, and clarifies vacation and work duty notices, and the procedure which determines filling special assignments.
Thank you, Mrs. Ricky. Are there any questions for the Personnel Committee? Seeing none, you've heard the motion and the second. Alls in favor of approving resolution R-17-010, approving a collective bargaining agreement with the Wisconsin Professional Police Association for the, for the 2017 through 2019, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes. Ms. Ricky?
Okay, under item 9B2, I move approval of the employment agreement for Finance Director, Treasurer position for Brian Lammers.
Second.
Thank you. I'm not sure who would like to speak on this. The Finance Committee, I know, did have an opportunity to meet with this individual. We were supportive of making the offer. Personnel Committee's had a chance to review. I believe the mayor, as well as Mr. McCorskey, would voice their approval of this choice as well. Anything you'd like to add?
I have not personally met Brian yet, but I have only heard good things about him from all those people you mentioned.
Very good. Mr. Stewart, anything you'd like to add?
Nothing further to add.
Mr. McCorskey?
If you'd like, I can provide some of the details.
I think that'd be great.
Brian is currently the Finance Director in Jefferson County. He's been there for a little over four years. He's had a background in Brown County as Highway Commissioner, and also Office Man, Office Director of the Department of Highways, basically doing the financing for that, that division. His salary will be $97,522.72, and he's expected to start March 13th, 2017.
Thank you, Mr. McCorskey. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, if, excuse me, are there any other questions now that you've heard Mr. McCorskey's explanation? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the employment agreement for the Finance Director Treasurer position Brian, with Brian Lammers, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes. Anything else from Personnel?
Nothing further.
Very good. Moving on to item 9C, the Public Safety and Welfare Committee.
Thank you.
Mr. Stewart, thanks.
Under item 9C1, I'd like to make a motion to approve an application for a combination Class B intoxicating liquor and Class B fermented malt beverages license from Its Time Grill and Pub LLC, doing business as Its Time Pub and Grill, located at 608A West Verona Avenue, Verona, Wisconsin. Tim McRoberts as the agent.
Thank you.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any further discussion, or any, anything else you'd like to add, Stewart?
Sure, I'll add a little further explanation. Its Time Grill and Pub LLC has applied for a combination Class B intoxicating liquor and Class B fermented malt beverages license to sell beer, wine, and liquor at Its Time Pub, I'm sorry, Its Time Grill and Pub, located at 608A West Verona Avenue. Tim McRoberts will be appointed agent for the license. Its Time Grill and Pub LLC is purchasing the property at 608A West Verona Avenue from its current owner, Monty's Grill and Pub Bank. Mr. Roberts anticipates closing the sale on or around March 1st, 2017. This approval of this license will be contingent upon the surrender of the combination license currently held by Monty's Grill and Pub, Inc.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Any questions? Mr. Touche?
Out of curiosity, what are the fees for this transfer? Do we know? Or do you know? Somebody? I mean, you said licenses, new licenses, I think they cost around $10,000. I'm curious if this one has a cost to it.
It does not, not the $10,000. This is not a reserve license, so a reserve license always remains a reserve license. A regular license remains a regular license.
Okay.
So he's getting a regular license.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. Any other questions? Seeing none, alls in favor of approving the application for a combination Class B intoxicating liquor and Class B fermented malt beverage license for Its Times Grill and Pub LLC, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And that motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Is there anything else?
Nothing further, thank you.
Moving on. Item 9D, Plan Commission. Mr. Linder?
Thank you, Mr. McGilvery. Next is agenda item 9D1. I'll make a motion to approve resolution number R-17-011, approving a conditional use permit to allow an indoor commercial entertainment land use known as Four Sisters Restaurant at 958 Liberty Drive.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Ricky. Mr. Linder?
Thank you. The proposed conditional use permit would allow Four Sisters Restaurant to occupy approximately 4,000 square feet of space at 958 Liberty Drive. The proposed restaurant will have both indoor and outdoor dining space, and will be located in the same building as the Verona Woods Restaurant. The Plan Commission held the required public hearing on February 6th, 2017, and voted 6 to 0 to recommend approval with the following conditions. The use of the outdoor seating area is permitted to operate from 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM, seven days per week. Number two, outdoor patio fencing shall be a minimum of 48 inches tall. Number three, the outdoor patio fencing materials shall be approved by the Director of Planning and Development. Number four, the exit for the patio shall be labeled as an exit only. And five, the fencing gate for the outdoor patio shall comply with the requirements of the Police Department and Building Inspector. So maybe I'd like to amend my motion and include those amendments.
Very good, Mr. Linder. So noted, and Ms. Ricky, are you fine with that as well as the second? Thank you.
I always forget that.
Any questions for Mr. Linder concerning this item? All right, seeing none, you've heard the motion and the second and the explanation. Alls in favor of approving resolution number R-17-011, approving a conditional permit to allow an indoor commercial entertainment use known as Four Sisters Restaurant at 958 Liberty Drive, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. Moving on, and 9D2, Mr. Linder?
Thank you, Mr. McGilvery. I'll make a motion to approve resolution number R-17-012, approving a conditional use permit to allow an indoor commercial entertainment land use known as Nala Restaurant at 957 Liberty Drive with the following conditions. Number one, the use of the outdoor seating area is permitted to operate from 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM, seven days per week. Outdoor patio fencing shall be a minimum of 48 inches tall. The outdoor patio fencing materials shall be approved by the Director of Planning and Development. Number four, the exit for the patio shall be labeled as an exit only. Number five, the fencing gate for the outdoor patio shall comply with the requirements from Police Department and Building Inspector. Number six, prior to the issuance of building permits, the applicant shall submit a site plan for approval that meets the minimum parking requirements of the zoning ordinance. And seven, occupancy for Nala Restaurant shall not be granted until the applicant constructs parking that meets the minimum parking requirements of the zoning ordinance.
You've heard the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions on this item?
I could do a little more explanation if you like.
All right, that'd be great.
The proposed conditional use permit would allow Nala Restaurant to occupy approximately 3,300 square feet of space at 957 Liberty Drive. The proposed restaurant will have both indoor and outdoor dining space, and will be located in the same building as Sugar River Pizza. The Plan Commission held the required public hearing on February 6th, 2017. Discussion by the Plan Commission included review of the existing and future parking on the site. The Plan Commission voted 6 to 0 to recommend approval of this conditional use permit.
Thank you, Mr. Linder. Any questions? Mr. Diaz?
Thank you. Could you talk a little bit about the, the conditional, the condition regarding parking?
Maybe I'll hand, Adam's ready to jump in over there.
Thank you. So the parking for the site is, is, currently there's 92 parking spaces on the property. The ordinance requires between 113 and 153 parking spaces, and that's based upon both the uses that are there right now and what we anticipate as future uses. So the parking is calculated with Sugar River Pizza in mind, that's both the indoor and outdoor area, and the same thing with this restaurant as well, both the indoor and outdoor areas. So that's why there is a range of how the parking is being calculated, between that 113 and 153. So they are slightly short on that. They do have some potential areas they can add additional parking. You know, also as future development to the east of the site occurs, there will be shared parking as well, too. But looking at it just right now on its face value of what's there, there today, it is short by approximately 20, 25 stalls, if not a little bit more.
Thank you, Mr. Sayer. Any other questions? Seeing none, you have a motion and a second before you. Alls in favor of approving resolution number R-17-012, approving a conditional use permit to allow an indoor commercial entertainment land use known as Nala Restaurant at 957 Liberty Drive, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Opposed? And that motion passes. Thank you. Mr. Linder?
Thank you, Ms. McGilvery. I'll make a motion to approve resolution number R-17-013, approving a certified survey map to create one lot south of West Verona Avenue, west of West End Circle, and east of Wall Street, with one condition, the shared access easement identified on the CSM shall be modified to allow the city to enforce parking on the easement.
Thank you. Further explanation, Mr. Linder?
Sure, thank you. The proposed certified survey map will create one lot in the West End. When the city approved the mixed-use project for Steve Brown Apartments, a condition of approval was for the developer to complete a CSM to combine the parcels and designate the existing driveway as a fire lane. The proposed CSM and easement modification will satisfy the condition of approval. The Plan Commission reviewed the CSM on February 6th, 2017, and voted 6 to 0 to recommend approval.
Thank you, Mr. Linder. Any additional questions? Seeing none, there's, you have a motion and a second. Alls in favor of approving resolution number R-17-013, approving a certified survey map to create one lot south of West Verona Avenue, west of West End Circle, and east of Wall Street, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes. Last one, Mr. Linder?
Thank you, Ms. McGilvery. Next is agenda item 9D4. There is no action required tonight. It is a concept plan for a planned development located at 114 South Main Street and 108 Park Lane. So the plan unit, the plan development concept plan located at 114 South Main Street and 108 Park Lane. The proposed plan will allow for the construction of approximately 18,000 square feet of commercial space and 55 apartment units. The applicant is requesting a plan unit development concept review to allow for the construction of two buildings that would provide approximately 18,000 square feet of commercial space and 55 apartment units. The Plan Commission reviewed the project on February 6th, 2017. Comments from the Plan Commission included support for the idea to redevelop the properties, concerns about the four-story building height located along South Main Street, a desire to see additional architectural details on the buildings, and a need to provide truck access to Miller &amp; Sons. The council is encouraged to provide feedback and recommendations to the applicant on the project, no formal action, and there was also discussion about density. So I don't know, Mr. Sayer has anything to add to this project?
Mr. Sayer?
I have nothing to add at this time.
Really?
I can, I can do a summary if you'd like, if you'd like a summary, or I, no additional, would you like a summary? Okay. So the, the.
If you'd like a summary, I, yeah, go for it, okay.
So the applicant is requesting a plan development concept review. This is the second step in the plan development process. The plan development process is a four-step process. Step one is a staff meeting, a meeting with staff, a staff. The second step is the concept plan review before the Plan Commission and Common Council. There is no action by the council tonight, and there was no action by the Plan Commission last Monday night. Step three, if the project goes forward, is the general development plan. That's where zoning entitlements are potentially granted as a part of that process. There is a public hearing at the step three process. And then we have step four, which is a precise implementation plan. That is the final step of the process where detailed plans are submitted for approval by the city. After the step four is granted, then the applicant can pull building permits. The applicant is requesting the concept plan review tonight to construct approximately 18,000 square feet of commercial space and approximately 55 apartment units. As part of this project, the World of Variety building would be, would be demolished, and there'd be a new building placed along South Main Street. Also, the existing ACE building would be demolished, and a new building would be located along the corner, the corner of Schuman and West Verona Avenue. For the building that's at the corner of Schuman and West Verona Avenue, ACE would actually become a tenant in the first floor of that building. So they'd be basically redeveloping their site, then taking most of that first floor space in that, in that building. A few items to kind of point out here. One, from a bulk standpoint, staff has requested a few additional modifications to the site plan. One of those modifications being along South Main to make sure the building is set back at least 15 feet. That would accommodate any potential expansion of that roadway in the, in the future. So we've requested that to the applicant. The second item is that we've requested actually 15 feet of right-of-way along West Verona Avenue, and that will accommodate a potential near-term road expansion in this area. Parking and access, as Mr. Linder kind of touched upon, one of the items I think we want to point out is that from an access standpoint, the key, one of the keys of this project is ensuring that Miller's &amp; Sons continues to have access for their trucks in the rear. Staff has kind of initially looked at this, and we've told the applicant to hold those turning radiuses that exist today as they are today. So there may need to be some modifications to that park lane area. With regard to park lane, the applicant is proposing to vacate that as a public roadway and turn that into a private drive. Along with that, they would add some angled parking on there that could be utilized for the redevelopment of this, of this area. In general, staff is supportive of this, of redeveloping these sites. I think it's an interesting project to take a look at the opportunities we have right now with the vacancy of the World of Variety building, and also having, potentially having the ACE, an existing business, basically relocate into a new building. So with that, staff would be interested in hearing your comments tonight, and I'm sure the applicant would be interested in hearing your comments and questions that you have. Thank you.
Well, we'll open it up. Mr. Diaz?
Thank you. I had a few things and a few questions. Overall, I like the project. I think that's an underutilized portion of our city. I think the density is fine, provided, as previously mentioned, that Miller's &amp; Sons can still have access that they need. I do have a question for Adam. Why a private drive there? Like, what are the upsides?
Well, currently it's a public roadway. You know, staff, staff has had some internal discussions even prior to this project of looking at this area as, as that, as a roadway. It, it is a public roadway, but one, it doesn't, doesn't look that way. It serves mostly just as a private drive currently to serve Miller's, and also when World of Variety was there. It's, it's smaller than our typical standard right-of-way you would find in the city, and I think trying to actually build that out with sidewalks on both sides would be very, very challenging. So I think from a staff perspective, you kind of, as you looked at how this is being utilized, it, from a public standpoint, it didn't really serve much of a purpose. It's basically serving right now Miller's and, like I said, the former World of Variety, that it, it may make more sense of looking at this, of turning, vacating and turning it over to the adjacent property owners, instead of the city coming in, rebuilding it to our, you know, full standards.
If I can do a follow-up?
Absolutely.
Would we have to build it up to our standards if, if it gets, or could we just leave it in its current, more or less, condition and maybe just maintain it?
Well, if, if we were to, you know, if the city were to basically vacate it, it would be, it would, half the road would go to the property owner on the north, and their half would go to the south as well. So I think, as we've looked at it, we'd like, we'd prefer the vacation option of it. Now, if the city were to basically not do that, you know, we, we could look at the improvements there. I believe we did have some potential improvements planned there, possibly for next year. I'm not sure if Mr. Jacobson would like to discuss that.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Sayer. The improvements on East Park Lane, or excuse me, West Park Lane in this area are slated for 2018, so we have some time to look at what we're doing in there versus what this potential development could, could have in store. So the improvements that were planned there was basically just to rebuild in kind. So whatever the typical section was there today is what we would, would put back, because we have proximities to the existing buildings, existing utilities, and then also differentials in grade that we would have to make up. So that's the, that's what the approach was on our, our level, on the public works side. So there are utilities in there that would be a concern. So there's water and sewer, and the connections to the adjacent buildings are within that right-of-way, so the service. are within that right-of-way. So the service laterals and for sewer and water. So those are items that would have to be addressed also. Whether we could vacate, relocate, or move is something that would have to be looked at.
Mr. Steiner?
Thank you. Theron, will the pump house be affected by any of this reconstruction?
Mr. Steiner, nope. Well 1 will not be affected.
Because, you know, when that well dies, that's, that's one, we want that to be a historical society. So I don't want any of this area to shrink at all, to take away space for the society, potential society in that building.
No, I've had conversations with the historical society about well 1, so that won't.
All right.
This development want to have any impact on the water system or?
Good.
The well 1 site.
Thank you. And Adam, for parking underground, how many, how many stalls are they looking at putting underground?
They're cur, excuse me, they're currently at 47 underground spaces. One item that staff and both Plan Commission have recommended, that they have at least one underground space per unit in the building. And that's consistent with the last five or six multifamily development projects that we've looked at. So there'll need to be some modifications made to the site plan in order to meet that requirement.
And, and I'd like to have you look into, is it possible to, to go with that idea? And then also add in one or two for each of the businesses that are there in that building? Because they're going to have, you know, a boss or a manager or something that may not want to park on the street. And, and underground parking would be good for those folks who are running that business. Is that possible?
It's always possible. We'll share that comment with the developer and see what we can do. It's, obviously, it comes down to space and cost.
Yeah.
Well, we can relay that off to them.
Is there any piping underneath there? Theron, you know that? On that lot?
Mr. Steiner, the, any of the piping that would be inside that parcel right now would basically be the service laterals. There's probably some inside localized storm sewer for the parking lot, but all that would get reshaped anyways. So we would, any of the water sewer services, we'd have them hook up to existing lines of the property line. So whatever they wanted to do internally, that's a decision on the private owner.
The sewer and water hookups and piping would not influence the, the parking, the model parking spaces we could gather underneath there?
I would have to say no, and also to be determined.
Okay, that's fair, that's fair. Yeah, because I'd like to see as many parking spots underneath there as possible. And, and there's got to be at least one for each of the apartments, for sure. Maybe, you know, more, but I don't know how deep you can go or, or whatever. Because if we're heading down this road of, of developing this kind of a setup where we have, you know, places to live on top of businesses, we have to put those vehicles somewhere. And we don't want them on the street because that area is already congested all the way around. Schuman, to all the way to Main Street and, and Park Lane, even, I've seen people squeeze in there once in a while. They always claim they're just unloading. Unloading what? Well, I don't know that either, but it's a problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Steiner, for your comments. Mr., Mr. Touche?
I'd like to echo Mr. Steiner's comments on the parking. I definitely think employee parking should be considered in the underground part of the building, Adam. But the other point I really wanted to talk, ask is the, the material question. You know, I saw it's a four-story building. Adam, do we have a sense of what kind of materials will be used to kind of construct the structure of this building?
Well, from an outside standpoint, the applicant is proposing to use stone veneer, fiber cement, siding, and laminate siding. So that's what the exterior materials would be. I know you're asking about how the building would be constructed from a internal standpoint. You know, I think those are conversations staff has had. I think at, at this time, it's currently wood. But we've inquired about that and have requested more details on that. I'm not sure if Mr. Mikorski's heard back on that one yet, but I, I know I haven't.
I'd like to follow up with that question.
Mr. Touche, you're ready?
Thank you. So, Adam, I, I'm not, certainly not a building expert. When I think of downtown buildings, I usually don't think of wood structures. I think of more permanent structures, whether it be steel or concrete. And just seeing the number of stories this is, I'd be very interested in hearing about, you know, more about this building and, and its potential longevity. Because for me, a wood building tends to max out usually at 50 years, although I'm no expert. But, you know, I'd be more interested in something that is, when we put it in, is here to stay versus can potentially time itself out.
Well, I do see Mr. Slavy's here from KSW. If you would like to talk, feel free to come on up. Hi, Dean.
Hey, how are you?
Good.
Dean Slavy, KSW Construction, working with the two parties, Ace Hardware, Ace Hardware, and World of Variety on the new development over there. We are taking a look at the steel on the first floor only. Typically, you know, we can go four floors in wood. That's not an issue. It's more economic. The first floor with, with the higher ceilings and being retailers that we have lined up in there would like higher ceilings with the open grid system on the bottom. So we're looking at steel on the four-story. The three-story we have not at that point because typically a three-story building can be built out of wood, no issues structurally wise. That answers some of your questions, I will.
As long as we've got Mr. Slavy up here, is there anybody else who has a, a question for Mr. Slavy? Mr. Diaz?
Thank you. In regards to the apartment, which company would be managing them? Or would you have a management company on site?
Elaine and Mark on Ace Hardware. Elaine used to work for a management company. She would take care of Rome. And we are hiring a management company for World of Variety. A local company.
Thanks, Dean.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Stewart?
Yes, thank you. I guess my question has to do with, you know, out of, out of safety concern and sightlines particularly as relates to the building forward design here, and all corners here where the larger buildings are and where traffic will be primarily exiting either on, on any of, any of the streets. It just seems like, you know, on the streets that I drive right now, it's a challenge to kind of see. And with the forward building design there, I'm just curious as to what type of study has been kind of looked at for that.
I'm assuming that's going to go to Mr. Sayer, although I don't know that he has an answer for that, or, or Mr. Jacobson.
To be honest, we haven't looked at it that closely because it's concept only at this time. We do have our downtown plan, which obviously looked at how this area could function with obviously a larger traffic intersection, additional lanes of traffic as well. But from a strictly sightline standpoint of how that fits within the larger picture of the road, we just, at this pace, we have not done that at this time, to be honest with you. We've, we've looked at some of the access points that are out there right now. You have some existing shared access points with, with Park Bank. You know, there's an access point from Park Bank on the Main Street that staff has a preference to try to restrict that. Now, I understand that's a shared access point that Park Bank also has some control over, so it's not strictly for this development. But we have some concerns potentially with that being a full access point with those left turns going out of that driveway and also into that driveway from Main Street. We have looked at slightly the potential if, if Park Lane were to be vacated, of potentially restricting that to a right-in, right-out, just to cut down once again that left-hand turning movement into that area as well. But from a complete study standpoint, engineering standpoint, no, we just, we're still pretty high level here.
Okay, thank you.
Is that all, Mr. Stewart?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any comments? Mr. Linder?
Yeah, just, you know, one of the topics we spent a lot of time on the Plan Commission was, on this project another, was density. And I believe this is roughly 40 units an acre. Is that correct, Mr. Sayer? Or somewhere on there? So I'd be curious if anybody had any thoughts. And Luke kind of chimed in, but if anybody else had any thoughts on that part of it, too.
Well, I'll jump in a little bit on that one. I think I, I've got a history of not supporting density, but this is exactly the kind of thing that I think we want to have because we're, we're trying to drive interest in our downtown. So from my point of view, and to the applicant, I would say that I, I don't have a problem with the density in this case because that's where we're trying to get people is in the downtown. So they're right there. It's a, it's a captured, it's a known entity, so I'm, I'm happy with that. I'd be curious to hear what everybody else says besides Luke as it relates to the density.
I think, I agree with exactly what you said. And I'm in a similar position as far as apartments as well, so.
Mr. Stewart?
I echo comments on that as well, too, that, you know, I think this makes a good case to make an exception here for the density guidelines that we have in place. The only other observation I guess I had, and I realize there's two different owners here, but is there any particular reason one building is three stories versus the other one being four stories?
Looks like Mr. Slavy's.
Sorry, I shouldn't have asked that when you were up.
Well, the first thing we're trying to do is exactly what Adam was trying to make, the underground parking a lot for the stories, for them. And we can get a tighter site plan with the World of Variety going up because it has less, but we, our other plan does have enough parking for every unit in there that we are working on right now. So we're just trying to maximize our underground to our apartments. And if I don't do four stories, it's kind of, doesn't make financial sense to do it because of the income we need to do with the building to get the return on the money. So.
Anyone else? Ms. Ricky?
I don't mind the density and the mixed use. Sounds good to me.
Good. The only thing I would add, I'm a little concerned with just the aesthetics of it, just the way it looks. I'm not completely married to that. I hope you guys aren't either. I'd like to see something a little, I don't know, just looks like there's too much going on. And, you know, it's supposed to be, it is going to be a focal point for the downtown, likely how the downtown, we'd like to see it redevelop. So if we could focus a little bit on the aesthetics and, and to Mr. Touche's point about the longevity of the building, how long it's going to last, I mean, I'd really like to see a little more from that. But I appreciate, I appreciate you guys keeping, working on this project and keeping it in front of us. Would either of the owners like to add anything at this point? You don't have to, certainly.
We covered it all.
Okay, very good. Well, that's it. There's no action on that item. Mr. Linder, well done. We'll move on then if nobody has anything else. Item, we'll move to Parks and Recreation, I believe. Is that Mrs. Ricky? Very good.
I'll make, this is item 9E1. I make a motion to approve ordinance number 17-890, amending the code of ordinances, City of Verona, Wisconsin, relating to administration and operation of city-owned cemeteries.
Thank you, Ms. Ricky.
Second.
Second by Mr. Touche. Anything else?
Do you want to give an explanation? Dave, Dave Walker is here. You don't have to.
I'll just give a brief explanation. It's a 19-page ordinance. I don't want to really go through the whole thing. I'm sure you, you all don't want to hear it. I was drafted by our city attorney, was also taken up at our last park board meeting. They approved it. It was also reviewed. I'd like to thank Paul Schmidt, who's a long-serving park board member and also an estate attorney. He volunteered to go through it again. So it's, it's actually been reviewed by legal counsel twice. So I'm pretty confident with the, with the legality of what's in here anyways. But, and it also, you know, it just basically codifies the operation of the cemetery. The city will be taking it over. We're still in the midst of getting, they just did the title search on the property. We're getting legal documents together for the financial transfer and the property transfer. So that will take place shortly. But the idea is to get the ordinance in place so that when we take it over, we're ready to go. Operations, at least for the time being, will be the same as they have been historically. So we're not, this doesn't set any rules or any precedents that don't already exist there.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Any questions? Well, we've got David up there. Seeing none? Thanks. Oh, Ms. Ricky?
I don't have a question. I just also wanted to recognize Paul Schmidt for giving his time and expertise on making some changes to the ordinance to make it better. So appreciate that.
I think, appreciate that. Tell Paul we, we say thank you. And I know you put some time into this, too, David, not just.
A fair amount, yeah. But it just, this has gotten to be a pretty long process. So I'm ready for it to come to its conclusion, more so than most.
Fair enough.
All right.
All right. You've heard the motion, the second, and the explanation. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor of approving ordinance number 17-890, amending the code of ordinance for the City of Verona, Wisconsin, relating to administration and operation of a city-owned cemetery, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes. Thank you. Moving on, I believe Mr. Diaz will be taking Public Works Sewer and Water.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to award Parisi Construction the contract for project 2015-104, the Downtown Streetscape Stage 2 and 3, in the amount of $1 million, $1,823,551.15.
Thank you, Mr. Diaz. You've heard the motion. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Touche. Mr. Diaz?
Just a, a brief explanation because I'm having computer problems and can't see the agenda. The, I'll just read it. I like my brief version anyway. But Parisi Construction has done work in the city before, including being a subcontractor on the downtown project, which included the memorial, which I think turned out very nice. They were the low bidder, of course, and the, the bid came in a little bit underestimated, which is, which is excellent.
Very good. And by a little bit, I think 300 and, 370,000 underbid, which is great because we did have some issues with some projects from last year, as you, as you remember, that went a little bit over. So is there any further discussion or questions for Mr. Diaz? Seeing none. You have a motion and a second, or before you for the approval of a contract for project 2015-104 Downtown Streetscape Stage 2 and 3 with Parisi Construction in Verona for $1,823,551.15. All is in favor of approving that contract, awarding that contract, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes. Mr. Diaz?
Thank you. I would like to move approval of resolution number R-17-014, authorizing Mr. Theron Jacobson as an employee of the responsible unit for planning, constructing, or operating a recycling program.
Who was the second, Mr. Touche? Very good. Mr. Diaz?
Thank you. This is just a bit of bookkeeping. As you know, Ron Reader is no longer the Public Works Director, and he was the previous person, the previous authorized employee, which was done in 2004. So this is just making sure we are up to date and on the right side of the DNR.
Very good. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of approving resolution R-17-014, authorizing Mr. Theron Jacobson as employee of the responsible unit for planning, construction, or operating a recycling program, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. We won't be taking any action under item 3. That was tabled at committee level. Is there anything else for the good of the committee?
Nope.
Thank you. We'll move on to new business. Item 10A, discussion of possible action regarding resolution R-17-015, authorizing Fire Department Automatic Aid Agreement. Mr. Mikorski, will you be taking that?
This is in agreement with the Fire Department. Chief Joe Giver is here. He can provide some additional information regarding the, the agreement.
Good evening, everyone. What we're requesting tonight is to sign our automatic aid agreement with Fitchburg, Oregon, Town of Madison Fire Departments. This is something that we originated in 2003 on a trial basis. It's worked extremely well. This is the same agreement that was signed in 2003, just a lot of changes have been made in Fire Departments and in elected officials. So we thought it was time to renew the agreement. This allows Fitchburg and Oregon and whoever to respond into with us automatically. Automatic aid is something that's sent right away when the call comes into the 911 center, reports a fire. We got automatic aid from Fitchburg coming right away, and probably Oregon, they're the two that come the most. This right away and probably Oregon. They're the two that come the most. Uh, this authorizes us to continue doing that. The city has never signed this, uh, resolution, uh, because when it was signed in two thousand and three, we were a fire district, so this is a new thing. Another reason we need to update it and have your signatures on it. Uh, and the county one on the back is the same thing, just authorizes us to, uh, expand automatic aid if it, if it so uh, pleases everyone to do that. So it's, uh, basically just some housekeeping things, nothing new, just something we've been doing since two thousand and three.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions? Seeing none? You've heard the explanation. Uh, all those in favor of approving.
We've got a, we have no motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We have no motion yet.
Oh, you didn't? Well, you're right, we don't. Mr. Linder, would you like to make a motion?
I would, thank you. I'll make a motion to approve resolution, uh, R dash seventeen dash zero one five, authorizing fire department automatic aid agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Linder. Mr. Touche has the second. You have a motion, you have a second. You've heard the explanation. All those in favor of approving our resolution, R dash one seven dash zero one five, authorizing fire department automatic aid agreement, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Uh, moving on to ten B, approval of operator licenses. Ms. Clark?
I have operator license applications for Hannah Abbott and Giovanna Kurtz for Montes, Jaclyn Cast and Christopher Hagan for Fisher King, Kevin Coltenberg for Treads, Devon Alcox Bradford for Vincenzo Sitko, and Mackenzie Malsen for the Verona Woods.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. We deem a motion? I said we would need one. Thank you very much. And a second by Mr. Touche. There's no further discussion. All those in favor of approving the operator license, signified by saying aye? Opposed? And that motion passes. On to announcements. Any announcements for this evening? Mrs. Clark?
Um, we're planning our open book for April twelfth through May first. Um, and if it pleases the council or the Board of Review, um, we would like to hold the Board of Review from, from six to eight PM on Monday, May fifteenth.
Mrs. Clark, do you know how many people currently we have that have gone through the classes? Is everybody eligible then to be on the board? Could, do you have enough people who are certified?
We need at least two people to take the class.
So that always goes to the two junior people, I believe. Mr. Stewart? All right. We'd need one more. Have, have you taken the class, Mr. Touche?
Have you, Mr. McIlver?
Actually, I have, a couple times. So we'd need two. Is everyone all right with the, uh, how many people do we need for the quorum for the Board of Review, Ms. Clark? I want to say it was, is it?
It's the council.
So it'll be a five. Okay. So we'd need five people there at six PM on May fifteenth. Does anybody have their calendar handy? What is the fifteenth? Six PM? What day is that?
May, on Monday.
Monday? Okay. So we've got one no.
If needed.
Well, so far, I tell you what, let's do this. Uh, if everybody could look at their calendars and let Mrs. Clark know, um, if you could send out to, if you could send it out to Liz as well, just to make sure she knows, that'd be great. Um, any other announcements? Take the motion to adjourn would be in order? All right. Mr. Linder has the motion. Mr. Touche, all is in favor on adjournment, signified by saying aye? Opposed? And we are adjourned. Thank you very much.